Oh yes, oh yes, town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight.
What's the question, Crier?
Does America need compulsory health insurance?
Where's the meeting?
Bring your questions to the old town hall. Town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight.
Welcome to historic town hall in New York City for another spontaneous, unrehearsed, and uncensored discussion after the pattern of the old New England town meeting. From all over America, questions have come in on tonight's topic. From Mr. Matt D. Rust of Memphis, Tennessee.
How can socialized medicine be set up so that ample inducement is afforded physicians to perform their best services to all?
From Mr. Leonard Greenberg of Los Angeles.
Would the rapidly increasing tendency towards specialization and better service be hampered under state medicine?
And from Dr. E. P. Davis of Oklahoma City.
Mass production in industry has reached the masses. How can we physicians reach them with adequate medical services if not through socialization or health insurance?
These and many other questions asked by this representative American audience of more than fifteen hundred people gathered here in town hall tonight will be answered by our speakers. And now I present our moderator, Mr. George V. Denny, Jr., president of town hall. Mr. Denny.
Good evening, neighbors. How are you? This is the first question we ask our friends when we meet them. How are you? It's an ancient custom, but it serves to indicate how important health is to every individual. I remember a good many years ago when I attended a class in advertising psychology, health was considered the number one appeal. Health. How can we keep it? In spite of the magnificent progress made by medical science and the three-and-one-half billions of dollars a year spent to protect and improve our health, Americans are not considered the healthiest people in the world as compared with some nations. What's the reason for this? Why don't people understand the most simple laws of health protection and obey them? Why is our infant death rate so high? Why haven't we learned to control the common cold? These and scores of other similar questions plague us all, but particularly those of the medical profession and officers in the public health service. Various proposals have been made for compulsory health insurance, sometimes referred to as socialized medicine. Tonight, we meet this question head-on in a discussion led by Dr. Henry E. Sigrist, professor of the history of medicine of Johns Hopkins University, Dr. Terry M. Townsend, president of the Medical Society of the State of New York, and Dr. C.E.A. Winslow, professor of public health at Yale University. All distinguished authorities in their fields, and all of them vitally concerned to find means for advancing your good health and mine. And now I take pleasure at this time in presenting our first speaker, Dr. Henry E. Sigrist of Johns Hopkins University. Dr. Sigrist.
Ladies and gentlemen, what is compulsory health insurance? It is by no means a panacea and does not in itself guarantee good health to the people. It is an insurance against the unpredictable economic risk caused by illness. In a society in which four-fifths of all gainfully employed persons are wage earners or salaried employees, and I may say that this is new because a hundred years ago only one out of five was a wage earner. In other words, today where most people depend for a living on the labor market, there is naturally a strong feeling of insecurity and as a result, a strong demand for security. This is why insurance questions are so eagerly discussed today. Now, there are two aspects to the problem. Health insurance is called upon to provide compensation for the loss of wages due to illness. I shall not discuss this tonight since it is not a medical problem. It actually is one aspect of unemployment insurance. Once we accept the principle that a wage earner should have a system of insurance to provide compensation for the loss of wages in time of unemployment due to economic crises, there is no reason why we should not expand this and include unemployment due to illness. Health insurance then is a method of financing medical services. Let us discuss the advantages and disadvantages of such a system. The principle of insurance is to spread unpredictable risks among as many people as possible and to pool the resources of as many people as possible. Voluntary schemes work very well where there are large and economically homogeneous groups. But when the groups are small, when they are too poor, then they cannot carry the burden and are unable to provide enough benefits. You may have heard of the bill introduced in the Senate a year ago by Senator Kapper. It had little publicity and there's no chance of being passed in the near future. It is an interesting document nevertheless. I have read many bills on health insurance of many countries, and I have no hesitation to say that Senator Kapper's is by far the best bill on the subject I have ever seen. According to this plan, the services would be financed from four sources: the employee, the employer, state, and federal government. And this would indeed spread the risks among very large groups and pool the resources of the entire country. The scheme foresees compulsory insurance for wage earners except agricultural labors up to an income of about $3,000 a year. It would be open as voluntary insurance, and this can be done very well to combine the two, open as voluntary insurance for people whose income does not exceed a certain amount, say up to about $5,000, and old age pensioners, unemployed people on relief could be included also whereby the dispersing agency would make their contribution. Health insurance is not a definite form of health services. It is, I repeat, merely a method to finance services. Whether such a method succeeds or fails depends entirely on the kinds of services that are being financed in such a way. If the funds are merely used to pay for the haphazard medical services that people used to get in the past and very often still get today, we cannot expect much. The story however is different if the funds are used to finance health centers and centers that can provide periodic examinations and can provide not only a family doctor to everybody under the scheme, but also the services of specialists and hospital treatment and whatever the patient may need. I believe very strongly that group medicine has definite advantages and that any health insurance scheme should foresee such services. I am well aware of mistakes that have been made in many European schemes, and I have criticized myself more than once, but I think that these mistakes can be avoided. We have the benefit of the experience of forty-six countries today. People are often afraid that any such scheme would be burdened by bureaucracy. Well, this can happen indeed, and has happened in more than one country. If the doctors insist on being remunerated on a fee-for-service basis, there will always be endless red tape, because in such a case physicians will have to itemize their bills and will be interested in increasing the number of services while the insurance funds will have to check the bills. Germany is a perfect example of a system that has created a heavy bureaucratic machinery, and France, if possible, is even worse. In England, doctors are remunerated according to the so-called panel system. The doctor is paid a definite amount a year for every insured person registered on his panel, whether he's sick or not. That reduces the red tape, but is not an ideal system either. It is not always the best doctors who have the largest panels. Things seem to me much more satisfactory if doctors are salaried employees of a health center either on a full-time or on a part-time basis. In other words, conditions as they exist today in the cooperative health associations. In such a case, the doctor will have social security for himself and his family, and he will be able to devote all his efforts to the task. Well, sometimes he hears that the doctor loses incentive when he is on a salary, but I think that this is not correct. The most famous health centers in this country, such as the Mayo Clinic in Rochester and many other such centers, are operated by salaried physicians. And most medical progress has been achieved by men who were in salaried positions. I need only remember you of the names of Walter Reed, of Gorgas, of Flexner, of Welch, and so many other great American leaders. And besides, I strongly feel that it is very difficult to estimate the value of a medical service in dollars and cents. Another objection that is frequently heard is that any such system would suffer from political interference. Now, this would be a serious menace indeed, but I think it can be avoided also. Instead of being part of the administrative machinery, the health insurance funds can be organized as independent corporations administered by a board of directors representing all parties involved, namely employee, employer, physicians, and government, whereby the medical activities would be controlled by physicians alone. We often hear that the personal relationship between physician and patient would suffer under such a scheme. But again, I think that all depends on the scheme one has. A busy panel doctor who treats both panel patients and private patients may be inclined to devote more time and attention to his private patients, but we have never heard complaints about the relationship between physician and patient in cooperative health associations. I repeat that compulsory health insurance is not a panacea. It is one way of financing medical services. I have just spent many months in South Africa where the Medical Association of South Africa has endorsed a compulsory health insurance scheme, and I have tried to dissuade the doctors to adopt such a plan, because in that country, eight, over eight-tenths of the population is too poor to pay insurance premiums, so that obviously the solution for such a country is a different one. But here, where the majority of the people are wage earners, I believe that compulsory health insurance certainly deserves very careful examination.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sigrist. And even doctors disagree. I take pleasure now in presenting our second speaker, Dr. Terry M. Townsend, president of the Medical Society of the State of New York. Dr. Townsend.
Ladies and gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen of the radio audience. Does America need compulsory health insurance? No. Americans abhor compulsions. They will neither accept nor tolerate compulsory health insurance when they understand its full import to the nation and the individual. It is not insurance at all. It is a sickness tax. The funds are obtained by a deduction from the employee's pay envelope, to which is added as some contributed by the employer, and a quota made up by the state. Result: the workman receives less wages, the employer passes his contribution on to the consumer, which is also usually the workman, and the already taxed, overburdened state must tax further its citizens for the share which it contributes. Such a tax is discriminatory and inequitable, since it cannot be levied on the unemployed and the self-employed. Please bear in mind that the self-employed include the professions, the storekeepers, the farmers, artists, writers, musicians, and many others. They must bear the burden of the generally increased taxation but receive nothing from sickness insurance. The administrative causes of compulsory health insurance require a substantial part of all funds collected. In those countries where this plan is in effect, the overhead cost ranges from ten to seventeen percent. In our country, that administrative cost would aggregate a very large sum. The personnel required for administration of compulsory health tax system varies from one in fifty persons to one in one-hundred persons insured. These clerical workers are our necessity political appointees. Here we have a strong probability of the commercialization of the health of our people in such a large bureaucracy. In England, the morality of the civil or governmental servant is notably high. Yet, an official report on the British Health Services contains the following paragraph: Quote, "Throughout the health services, there is a constant need for considering what is done from the standpoint of the consumer, who with all his gains from the efficiency of the health workers is still liable not only to be exploited and misled by commercial influences, but to be inconvenienced in order to fit in with arbitrary and unnecessary administrative arrangements, or to be treated contrary to the best traditions of medicine as a case rather than a human being." Close quotes. This statement comes from a country which has tried the system for twenty-eight years. The patient's free choice of physician is limited. Once a panel is established, changes of physicians may be made only at periodic intervals. This may not be a major factor unless the individual is seriously sick. Granted that physicians are equal inability in industry and that patients are equally disciplined, yet there comes occasionally at the bedside an inexplicable clash of personalities, which may mean recovery or death to the sick man. The free choice of physicians is of far greater importance to the sick man than to the doctor. Under compulsory health sickness tax, the medication of the patient is limited to the barest essentials. In England, the average cost of the prescription, exclusive of the container, is sixteen cents. Prescriptions are examined by a special committee to see whether they are in accordance with regulations. Many of these are sent for further inspection to a central office. If the cost is considered excessive, it is deducted from the physician's pay. More than six millions prescriptions were reviewed in one year, nearly one in ten. To sum up my arguments against compulsory health insurance, I quote from Mr. J. George Crownheart's essay entitled "Looking at Health Insurance Abroad." Quotes, "Compulsory sickness insurance is sold as a social service, but its operation as an insurance plan defeats this end. Its beneficent intent is accepted as a guarantee of a quality of service that, because of its operation, it is increasingly impossible to render. To ensure a balanced budget requires a control over the medical services that has rendered the sick. Such control is exercised in every country where compulsory sickness insurance is existent, and it is not in accordance with our concept of sickness care. It is sold in its preventive aspects, but its budget and operation reduce medicine to the role of salvage." Close quotes. American medicine recognizes certain inadequacies in the distribution of medical care. To meet some of these, under the increasing, under the leadership of the American Medical Association, we have evolved a system of voluntary medical indemnity insurance. In the state of New York, these plans are under the control of the Departments of Insurance and Social Welfare, thereby assuring their stability and reliability. In the several districts, they are managed and financed by physicians and conducted under the most rigorous rules of professional conduct. These voluntary associations are run absolutely without profit and are open to every citizen and his dependents. The annual fees will be computed at far less cost than any deduction from a pay envelope plus the additional direct and indirect taxes which will accrue from any governmental management. Why should we find fault or quarrel with our present American system of safeguarding health? It's the best in the world. There's nothing like it anywhere else. It is supported by a tripod consisting of the private practitioner, the public health services, and voluntary health agencies. The private practitioner goes directly to the patient's bedside. His responsibilities are those which have devolved upon him since the time of Hippocrates. To him, the patient looks for aid, for alleviation of pain, for hope, for advice, and in the final hour, consolation in his transition. No commission, or bureau, or state-directed body can supply an adequate substitute. It is a personal responsibility only to be borne by a living being. The private practitioner teaches and supervises nurses, governs hospitals, establishes rigid discipline in the practice of his profession, and teaches his junior to carry on their traditional art and science of medicine. Public health services look to the control of communicable diseases, enforce sanitary laws, and compile statistics." Says Dr. Peter Irving, quote, "But when the state endeavors to accompany the doctor across the threshold of the sick room, the doctor must clearly register his remonstrance." End quote. It is no function of the public health service to practice medicine. The third functional unit so typically American is the voluntary health movement. This is made up of philanthropic citizens imbued with an altruistic motive to aid the less fortunate. They cooperate with physicians to form organizations to educate the public about tuberculosis, diabetes, cancer, and heart disease. They marshal public opinion, generally promote a better understanding among the citizens and this disease, and to affect public health improvement. What is the center of the world's today, medicine? Here. This system, as we know it, has produced institutions which are the envy of the foreigner. Our job is to improve what we have step by step and not to abolish the system completely by substituting a different one. Compulsory health insurance is a mark of decadent medicine everywhere it exists. Here in America, the art and science of medical care are not finished. Medicine is still growing. It still has much to do, and we wish to do it in a free, independent, and untrammeled manner.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. And now there's a third point of view in this triangle, and we're to hear from the distinguished professor of public health at Yale University, Dr. C.E.A. Winslow. Dr. Winslow.
Mr. Moderator and members of the audience. The question asked of your speakers tonight is, does America need compulsory health insurance? I should like first to be quite clear as to what we mean by America. America is the land of the free. And Colombia is the gem of the ocean. Neither land nor gem require compulsory health insurance. If the chairman will allow me to interpret America as meaning the people of the United States, I can proceed more intelligently. But even here, the terminology is far too broad for a categorical answer. There is a small section at the upper economic level of our population that does not need any change in the present situation. They can now obtain the best medical care available, and they can pay for it by the use of profits and reserves. They are essentially self-insured. There are much larger groups of people of the United States who urgently need health insurance. Sickness is not an average problem but in emergency. In general, at any income level, it appears that in a particular year, one family out of each hundred has medical bills amounting to between one-fourth and one-half of its total annual income, while other families in that year have no medical costs at all. Now, the answer to such an unequal distribution of costs is entirely obvious. We deal with all the other emergencies of life, fire, theft, death by insurance, that is by the pooling of the financial resources of a group of people over a period of time. It's abundantly clear that the only way in which a family on the middle economic level can pay its medical bills is by the application of the same principle. Our next question concerns the adjective compulsory, and it seems reasonably clear that below the small group of the wealthy is a second group which needs some form of insurance against the emergency costs of medical care but is sufficiently well off to purchase such service on a voluntary insurance basis. This is the group which can readily pay the average cost of medical care but which cannot budget for the unpredictable emergencies of sickness. This group needs health insurance, but not necessarily compulsory health insurance. More than three million of our population now purchase voluntary insurance to cover the costs of hospital care, and through the development of such organizations as those represented in the Group Health Federation, we have even more significant results in regard to voluntary insurance covering physicians' care as well. Voluntary insurance of this sort has developed new techniques of distributing medical care which offer real hope of achieving in practice the unrealized potentialities of modern scientific medicine, and is contributing materially to the knowledge of administrative procedure and of the cost of adequate medical care essential to future organization in this field. The problem with which voluntary insurance has had to contend has been the relatively small groups generally covered, for only with large groups representing the population at random can full stability, efficiency, and economy be assured. Furthermore, there is a third group in our population for whom no system of voluntary insurance can suffice. The families in this very considerable group cannot even pay the average cost of medical care with sufficient ease to make them potential members of voluntary groups, and many of them can only pay a part of this average cost. The economically less fortunate half of our people actually receives only less than half of the physician's care, only three-quarters of the hospital care, only one-fifth of the dental care, and only one-tenth of the special nursing care utilized and wisely utilized on a higher economic level. That is the indictment of our present lack of system. Compulsory health insurance is the means by which health service can be extended to those who can pay only a part of the full average cost of medical care through contributions to the fund by the employer and by the government. Thus, there is a considerable section of the population of the United States, primarily in its industrial areas, which needs and urgently needs compulsory health insurance, and within the general framework of our existing social order cannot obtain adequate medical care in any other way. I should like to note that no sharp line can be drawn between these various possible modes of providing medical care. Even when compulsory insurance comes, the voluntary health associations, the organizations now established providing industrial medicine, and the plans worked out by certain farm groups and the like would have a very real and vital part to play. For a considerable section of the population above the limit of a compulsory scheme, voluntary health associations would continue to meet an essential need, and any wise compulsory insurance law should provide a place for voluntary group service to its members. By exempting from the working of the compulsory law those groups already provided under a voluntary plan with services equal in type, amount, period, and quality to those secured under the compulsory system. Finally, for the indigent in the cities and for the general population in many rural areas where the social and economic conditions necessary as a background for insurance are lacking, an organized system of medical care supported from the tax levy is the only answer. So much for America, which seems to cover at least four distinct groups whose needs are different. Two of these groups need health insurance, either voluntary or compulsory, and the conditions under which sound health insurance plans may be set up deserve serious consideration. In the first place, any such plan must be economically sound and administratively safeguarded against possible exploitation. Secondly, it's highly desirable that health insurance should have as wide a range of services possible, including certainly as a minimum physicians' care, both general practitioners and specialists, nursing care, hospital care, and necessary drugs. And last but not least, a sound insurance plan must provide the maximum attainable standards of quality. To many of us, it seems clear that the only real, practical safeguard of quality lies in the development of some form of supervised group practice, and it is in their demonstration of the values of such group practice that the voluntary health associations have rendered one of their most valuable services. There is thus no simple answer to the question that has been put to us in this discussion, nor is there, as Dr. Sigrist said, any single panacea for the solution of the problems of medical care. For various sections of the population, we need the traditional system of individualistic medical care, we need voluntary insurance, we need compulsory insurance, and we need an expansion and a far better organization of tax-supported medical care for the indigent in our cities and for the population of our rural areas. We need, in other words, a broad national health program, employing various procedures in the sense in which it was formulated by the conference held in Washington during the summer of 1938. Progress must be gradual and evolutionary, but if any progress at all is to be made, it is essential that federal grants should be made available to stimulate experimentation by the various states. We stand still and quarrel about details and about hypothetical damage to our vested interests while men and women and children suffer and die for the lack of the resources of modern medical science. Let us forget slogans, let us forget slogans and avoid vague terminologies which arouse the secretion of the endocrine glands instead of stimulating the higher nerve centers. Let us recognize that the situation is serious and calls for action. Let us remember that there is no single easy solution of the problem, but that what we need is a national health program so constructed as to enable the people of these United States to obtain and to pay for the medical care they need, whether they pay for it as individuals, as groups, or as taxpayers. as groups, or as taxpayers.
Well, it seems as though you and all the other speakers have stimulated those higher nerve centers. We pause now for station identification.
WJZ, New York.
And having paused, we are going to continue now with a question period. This is America's Town Meeting of the Air discussing the subject, "Does America Need Compulsory Health Insurance?" And we've heard these three points of view. We are now ready for the questions. Please rise and state the name of the person to whom your question is directed. In the box here. Yes?
I have a question for Dr. Winslow. From Dr. Joseph Slate of the Medical League for Socialized Medicine, Brooklyn, New York. How will compulsory health insurance care for the health and sickness needs of the millions of farmers and their families, of the semi- nomadic workers, of the millions of artisans, small tradesmen, shopkeepers, professionals, and other self-employed and their families, and of the millions of unemployed, unemployables, and those on relief and their families?
Well, I think I've
Dr. Winslow?
Well, I don't need to I think I've answered that question. I've pointed out that health insurance, compulsory health insurance, can only take care of a certain group of the population, mainly the industrial workers, that the indigent group and the rural population in many sections must be cared for by a tax-supported medical service. Thank you.
Listen, Chairman, Dr. Ian Johnson, asking the question of both Dr. Sigrist and Dr. Winslow. Is it not true that compulsory health insurance proposes to compel people to pay for medical services which are now free of charge in hospitals and clinics? And is it not true that the underlying idea of the compulsory health insurance plan is this: Many persons cannot afford to pay for medical services because they lack the way with all the precious necessities of life. Therefore, you great gentlemen, propose to compel them to pay for medical services that they can't afford to pay for without the financial necessities of life? In other words, it takes
Right.
Under any such scheme, everybody would contribute according to his possibilities. People who have nothing wouldn't contribute anything, and they would have other services those pictured by Dr. Winslow. But I think it is only just that everybody should contribute according to his financial ability. And since large sections would not be able to pay for the whole cost of medical service, they would be aided by state subsidies and federal subsidies.
Thank you. Does that take care of it from your point of view? Dr. Townsend, do you want to speak on that question? All right, next question, the balcony, yes?
Dr. Townsend. Dr. Townsend, you expressed that under compulsory health insurance plan, the patients, the interests of the patients will be abused, that there will be bureaucratic abuse, and they won't get the proper care. Is it possible to make arrangements such as are in practice in various cooperative health plans where the consumers are represented and they have a voice in the board of directors so that they won't allow any abuse to take place?
Dr. Townsend.
When compulsory health insurance is set up, it cannot discriminate. There must be administrators. They must function according to the law as it is written. The appointment of a large bureaucracy is quite possible to form a pressure group to run the management of the distribution of medical care as they see wise, perhaps not as their patients' needs may indicate.
All right, thank you. Next question.
Question from Dr. Winslow. From Mrs. Mary Brenn Wiener of Rockville Center, New York. She asks, "Will compulsory public health insurance decrease charity cases to a city or community, and will such a procedure aid doctors in receiving payments for their services?"
I suppose it will. I suppose a system of compulsory insurance undoubtedly will to some extent reduce certain charity charges. That is, there are families on the borderline level who would be able to pay their share of an insurance scheme when they do not, when they get free ward service now. The answer to the other question is that any system of compulsory insurance will tremendously increase the volume of funds available to pay the physicians for their services, and that is why there is no country in the world where health insurance has been introduced in which the doctors have not completely changed their minds. They always opposed it at the beginning. There isn't a single country where the doctors would abolish the health insurance scheme once it's been set up.
Thank you.
Just how soon and in what manner would you give effective medical care to the one-third of American people, sharecroppers and marginal farmers and unemployed people who earn less than $900 a year?
Dr. Townsend.
I don't know that there are one-third of the people of the United States. I don't know that there are one-quarter. You're preparing a statistics which I'm not able to answer. By all means, if they earn a something, they can pay something for voluntary health insurance.
Is the gentleman down here have a question?
I have a question from Mr. Mike D. Rust of Mankis, Tennessee. He'd like Dr. Sigrist to answer.
Dr. Sigrist, I believe it is. I mispronounced it, Sigrist, yes. Dr. Sigrist.
Dr. Sigrist. How can socialized medicine be organized so that antecedents afford physicians to perform their best services to all?
I think it's very simple. If you can pay the physician decent salaries, then you're quite sure that there will be plenty of incentive. In New Zealand, for instance, under the New Zealand scheme, it was figured out that the average practitioner would have an income of $6,000 a year with no overhead charge, and I think that's a very decent income to begin with. There would be additional fees for specialists, hospitals, and so on. And under any scheme, whatever the insurance scheme is, millions will go to the doctor that the doctor does not receive today. Don't forget that the doctors today pride themselves that they give over $1 million of medical care free of charge every day. Well, under such schemes, this would be all unnecessary. The doctors would be remunerated for the work they do, and I think they are perfectly entitled to being remunerated for the splendid work that they are doing.
Young lady back there.
I'd like to ask Dr. Townsend if he would explain a little bit more clearly what he meant by the statement that under a health insurance scheme, the appointee would necessarily be political.
What do you mean by your statement that under, what did you say, compulsory health insurance, the appointee would be what?
Would necessarily be political.
It must be political to set up the scheme for work. You must have inspectors, clerks, boards of survey.
Why not civil service?
Pardon? Said, "Why not civil service? Why political? Why not civil service?" That's what the lady asked.
Has it never been known that there was a pressure group in civil service?
Dr. Townsend. Quiet, please.
Without frivolity about figures, assume there are 10 million people in this country, 10 million Americans, who have no funds to pay for medical service. What do you recommend for their care?
Well, Dr. Townsend, you spoke on that in your speech, but go ahead.
Apply to the hospitals for indigents where they receive excellent care. No one fails to receive medical care if he applies for it, whether he has money or not.
The lady back there.
Dr. Townsend.
Well, now, are we appoint somebody else next? Could you go ahead with this?
A 2% according to statistics who are not able to get hospitalization, authentically stated, from the medical research. Viewpoint. The medical profession, the A and A, has known this situation to exist in this country for a period of years. As an organized, specific, excellent medical service, what has the A and A done to help this situation to any extent? We appreciate that voice, but watch this happening, 25% of poor who cannot even get into our hospital bed, going to close our doors, and there is not a vet available for you.
Assuming those statistics and that situation to be correct, Dr. Townsend, will you speak on it?
I can't assume them to be correct because I've never known anyone who needed medical care to be turned away from a municipal hospital.
All right. All right. Are there a lot of hands up? I'll take this gentleman over here. Yes? Quiet, please.
Dr. Winslow.
Dr. Winslow.
I'd like to know whether under compulsory health insurance, anything can be done to prevent the farmers in California from burning up surplus oranges and pouring oil on them and setting fire to them when schoolchildren in Toledo are so ill-nourished they have to be fed soup and milkshake.
Well, now, that's an economic problem, Dr. Townsend, I'm afraid. All right?
Dr. Townsend.
Dr. Townsend.
Dr. Townsend emphasized the desirability of free choice of physicians. I think nobody can deny that, but does Dr. Townsend maintain that our present system allows a free choice of physician to the vast numbers of low-income groups who are treated in clinics and to the medically indigent?
When they are indigent and apply as such, they have a very limited choice of physicians. They have the choice of leaving one municipal institution if they don't like their medical service and going to another. That's the limit of their choice.
Well, there's some disagreement, but that's all right, Dr. Now, let's let the speaker speak, please. Yes? Next question.
First question for Dr. Townsend.
No, I want one for somebody else. Dr. Winslow, all right?
When our Congress is proposing to add hundreds of millions of dollars to its already huge army and navy expenditures when nobody is threatening to attack us, might that money not better be spent on protecting American citizens from diseases that are everywhere attacked?
That's another political question. Please keep on the subject now. I'll take another question for Dr. Sigrist. Who has a question for Dr. Sigrist? Yes?
I'd ask both Dr. Sigrist and Dr. Winslow. Do you know of any community in the United States where free care is not given to the indigent?
Dr. Sigrist and Dr. Winslow. All right, Dr. Sigrist.
It's not only a question of giving some care but of giving complete medical services, periodic examinations and regular services. And there's no doubt that when a man breaks down in the streets or when he gets scarlet fever or diphtheria, that something will be done, but that's not enough. If people are to be kept in good health, it needs constant medical supervision, the possibility of calling on a doctor at any time. And as was mentioned, I believe, before, we know that many hospitals are too full to receive people or wards have been close to receive people. At any rate, although in theory, everybody can go and call for service, we know that in practice, actually, many people do not get the medical care they need.
Dr. Winslow.
In the National Health Survey, it was shown that of children in cities, not in rural areas, but of children in cities suffering from disease disabling them for a week or more, 28% receive no medical care whatever.
Dr. Townsend.
Dr. Townsend. Now we're hitting on this triangle, right?
Does not public, does not compulsory health insurance promote preventive medicine?
Doesn't compulsory health insurance promote preventive medicine?
No, it retards. Compulsory health insurance takes all of the time the man can give to taking care of his assignment on panel and takes away from him the opportunity of studying and working for the prevention of disease.
Dr. Sigrist says he'd like to say something on that question. All right, Dr. Sigrist.
I'd like to draw attention to the fact that one American republic, namely Chile, which has a system of compulsory health insurance, passed a law last year according to which every man and woman under the scheme must have at least once a year a complete medical examination with laboratory tests and so on, and if the doctors in such an examination find that the man and woman is not sick but run down so that he may develop illness, the doctors must prescribe for them a period of vacation, either full-time or half-time, and the loss of wage is compensated for from the insurance fund. I think this is preventive medicine.
Dr. Townsend.
Don't you think that compulsory health insurance will prevent the mental stress of the humiliating grilling and investigation which our poor are forced to undergo in order to obtain the most minor free medical aid?
Dr. Townsend.
No. If he has nothing to conceal, there's no reason for his lack of truthfulness. In the next place, by his utter and free frank statements, he will be accorded the very best brains that can be had in that hospital or dispensary.
Question from Los Angeles. Here's a question from Los Angeles, California, for Dr. Townsend.
Dr. Townsend.
Leonard Greenberg, Los Angeles. Would the increasing tendency towards specialization and better service be hampered under state medicine?
Would the increasing tendency towards specialization and better service be hampered under state medicine?
Specialization does not enter into that because specialization will come as regards demand and supply. The better health services will be attained under free and independent system of medicine or voluntary medical insurance because the practitioner has the only and exclusively the interest and benefit of the patient in his mind.
Dr. Sigrist, in the remuneration of doctors in New Zealand. I'd like to know from Dr. Sigrist, Sigrist, how he is going to prepare the remuneration that the doctors receive in the United States today where they average $27 for 30 hours of work per week? Then again, if
One question at a time. Thank you, Dr. Sigrist. Yes? Yes, he says that they get $27 a week for 30 hours. Is that it?
The 58% in the United States averages less than $27 for 30, $27 for 30 hours of work per week.
Oh, yes, that's the WPA, Doc.
Well, that's bad enough, and it's time to change it.
All right. Next question.
Question for Dr. Sigrist. Dr. Fishbane of the American Medical Association made a statement in the press recently which he said that the nation's bill for hairdressing and beauty power was a billion dollars more than the nation's health bill. In lieu of that, can the nation finance its own health bill through compulsory insurance?
Certainly. First of all, the nation already spends almost as much for medical care as it does for cosmetics, and if we used a little bit less cosmetics, we could get infinitely more medical care.
What is it about cash indemnity insurance that allures Dr. Townsend? It doesn't touch the people who need a system of insurance, and so far as I know, it doesn't provide medical care. It gives the person a sum of money and doesn't even say that it should be spent on medical care.
The arrangements are such that the voluntary medical indemnity insurance forms a buffer as you form a buffer on a fire risk. If a number of people insure their houses and the loss of one house is taken up by the shock absorber of the insurance company, if the individual pays a small sum per month or per annum, his medical bills are met. Now, that money is paid to them for the specific purpose of paying the physician on a definite fee schedule.
Dr. Winslow's about to disagree with Dr. Townsend here.
All right. Trouble is that the health Trouble is that the health insurance, the insurance organization is left out from the cash indemnity plan, which is just the trouble with it. The money is simply handed to the patient, and he pays it over to the doctor. There is no check whatever, therefore, it's to neither the patient's nor the doctor's interest to keep the bills within moderate proportions. And that is the reason why the cash indemnity plan has failed completely and absolutely wherever it's been tried.
Dr. Winslow.
Dr. Winslow.
The Metropolitan Press during the past week or two has played up a conflict in a large hospital between the medical men and the lay governors over possible conflicts in jurisdiction. Is it not possible that under a national system, this might not occur on a national scale?
Dr. Winslow.
That is, that is, of course, conceivable, but it is no more difficult to organize a system of this kind under public auspices and to organize our present public health services. We organize a great many services here very well, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, this particular hospital, is it voluntary or not a public hospital? Is that correct?
I don't know, sir. Yes, he's nodding his head.
So that that is certainly not a characteristic of, in this case, of public ownership. I think there is no evidence whatsoever that the American people, any more than any other people, cannot manage an organization of this kind as efficiently and well as, on the whole, they now manage the health department.
The lady in the red jersey there, yes. In the red sweater. Isn't that a sweater? Yes. Sorry. Dr. Winslow.
Where is the money coming from, from the government, the federal government and the state government, to finance the compulsory health insurance?
Where is the money coming from?
You mean the federal money?
Federal and the state money.
The federal and state money will come from the general tax levy. That comes... No, you wouldn't pay twice, because at present, the people who are well off are paying fees to the doctors which enable the doctors to take care of charity patients. That's what's called the sliding scale. And in effect, the physician is acting as a tax collector. But he is not equipped by experience or training to serve as a tax collector. And that system, which worked very well in the New England village of 100 years ago, is an inefficient one. It need not cost the people who are now, who would pay that tax, any more than they're now paying, but they would pay it through regular tax channels.
Dr. Winslow, I understand sometimes doctors need bill collectors too, don't they? Dr. Sigrist. Dr. Sigrist.
Until such time as this excellent health program that you described this past, how may the, how may the average individual get a good benefit of medical care at a reasonable cost per year?
Well, if he's able to pay the amount of money that was mentioned this evening, then I have no doubt that these voluntary health associations, cooperative associations, are an excellent solution. Because it is group practice, it is, they give preventive services, and I have no doubt that this is a good solution for all those people who can afford to pay these fees. It's the other group that will require the compulsory system.
Gentlemen there?
Dr. Winslow, Dr. Sigrist. I've often heard it said that one of the evils with civil service is that you can't fire a civil service employee. He won't retire, and he never dies. What safeguards will we have in compulsory health insurance against the incompetent decision on a government panel?
The fact, the fact that a man is working in a group under civil service is certainly not going to be a complete guarantee against incompetency. But on the whole, my feeling is that the general level of medical service would be distinctly raised by bringing the doctors into groups in which they were practicing, subject to each other's criticism and knowledge, and subject to the supervision of the senior man in the service. I am personally confident the general effect would be to raise the level of practice, but it certainly will not... It certainly will not work miracles or transform Dr. X into an Oster overnight.
Dr. Townsend, will you speak to that same question? The entrenched civil service public servant who never dies or never retires, what protection have we against incompetence, then?
We only have the protection of bringing charges against him and proving him and firing him out, as far as I know. It's hard to beat a crook.
Thank you. Next question, take the lady here, yes? To whom? To whom? To whom are you speaking?
Oh, to Dr. Winslow.
All right.
Isn't it true that civil service employees take examinations which they must pass before they're appointed? Does that give them a certain amount of ability to...
Assuming examinations as a protection, is that enough?
And examinations for promotion, as, for instance, in the public health service, the men are examined at each promotion from grade to grade. I think that does materially help to maintain quality.
Thank you. Next question.
I'd like to have some definition from both Dr. Winslow and Dr. Sigrist, or either of them, as to their idea of the completeness of any compulsory health insurance plan, such as the specialties, dentistry, cardiomyopathy, and so forth. How do these fit in to the very, into the general picture of a compulsory health plan?
I wish we had time to have answers from both of those people, but our program time is almost up, and we just have time for the closing. And I have to ask Mr. Grauer a question or two. First, I want to thank the audience and the speakers for their questions. I'm sorry I couldn't take all of the hands that were up. Mr. Grauer, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What is this advisory service material we are sending to these discussion groups each week?
Each week, thousands of American people from coast to coast carry on their own discussions after these meetings in groups of 10, 15, 20, and 100. Many of them receive from Town Hall in advance each week a carefully-prepared statement of the background and issues of each subject, a list of suggested reading, and who's who of all the speakers. This is only part of the material sent out by the Town Hall Advisory Service of the groups and individuals who have become Town Hall associates. But these three services will be sent for $1 to cover the cost of preparation and handling for the last 10 weeks of the current season, which ends the first week in April. If you want to organize a discussion group or subscribe to this service, address the Town Hall at number 123 West 43rd Street, New York City.
Well, Mr. Grauer.
Yes, sir.
If I want copies of tonight's program, which I understand is printed in magazine form each week by Columbia University Press, do I address Town Hall?
Yes. Send $10 for tonight's program, or $2.50 for the entire series of 26 broadcasts of all this season, to Town Hall at 123 West 43rd Street, New York City. And may I repeat that address for you, sir, and others interested, 123 West 43rd Street, New York City.
And now for next week, Mr. Grauer, we go back to the newspaper headlines for our subject.
Tune in next week at this same hour on the same station for a town meeting on the subject, "Should the President's National Defense Program Be Adopted?" The speakers will be Major George Fielding Elliott, retired Army officer, author, and lecturer; Congressman Melvin J. Mars of Minnesota, member of the Naval Affairs Committee of the House of Representatives; and Mr. Oswald Garrison Villard, writer and lecturer. Mr. Villard has recently returned from a six-month tour of Europe, part of which was spent in the heart of Nazi Germany. As a special interrogator on this program, we will have Mr. William T. Stone, head of the Foreign Policy Association of Washington and vice president of the National Foreign Policy Association.
And don't forget to send in your question for the speakers to answer during next week's question period. For the best questions chosen by the judges on the basis of merit and timeliness, Town Meeting will pay the sender $5 each. All questions submitted become the property of this program. In case of duplicate questions, the first one received will be used. Questions should be limited to not more than 25 words if possible, and must reach us not later than Thursday noon the day of the broadcast.
Should the President's National Defense Program Be Adopted?
This has been a public service presentation of the National Broadcasting Company, RCA Building, Radio City, New York.